Okay, welcome. I'm Tim Skoggins, Chairman of the Shasbury Select Board, and I'm calling this meeting of the Shasbury Select Board to order at 6:30 on Monday, April 15th, 2019. If you're watching this, congratulations on getting your taxes done ahead of time. Does any member of the board have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
None.
No. Approval of minutes, we had minutes that have been circulating for a while for March 18th, and tonight we actually have Tim Skoggins, Ken Harrington, and Joe Barber here to approve those minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for March 18th?
So moved.
Moved by Ken?
Seconded.
Seconded by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining?
Two abstains.
So that motion carries by a vote of 3-0-2.
Tim, under DPW, can we add in the opening of the bid for various construction projects?
Yes. Do that now without objection? Okay, warrants. We have a check warrant number 31 in the amount of $9,700. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Tony?
Seconded.
Seconded by Art. This is $8,800 to Eddie Schul and $900 to Mike Taylor.
These are replacement checks. There were errors in the way the checks were issued. One went to Ed Schul, which should have been Ed Schul Construction, and the other one, Mike Taylor's, went out instead of being the first Assistant Chief, was paid for the second Assistant Chief, so we had to change it to $900.
Okay, okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So check warrant number 31, in the amount of $9,700, is approved by a vote of 5-0-0. Okay, next I have payroll warrant number...
Tim, did you say $9,300 on that?
I hope I said $9,700.
I thought you said $9,300. $9,700 is what, is what you originally said?
Yeah. It's $9,700.
Okay.
Next is payroll warrant number 20 in the amount of $23,578.64.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Tony?
Seconded.
Seconded by Art. Any discussion on the payroll warrant? All in favor of approval, say aye.
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 Payroll warrant number 20 in the amount of $23,578.64 is approved, 5-0-0. And I have check warrant number 31 in the amount of $74,175.49.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Tony?
Seconded.
Seconded by Art. Major items over $1,000. We have $1,600 to Artistic Cemetery Memorials, which would be the cleaning that we're doing.
Cleaning, that's all, and that's all Huntington family fund. It's just doing, there's a special fund just to maintain their...
Oh, so we haven't gotten to the general cleaning. This is just the Huntington...
No, this is just on that, yeah.
Good. $6,500 to Blue Cross Blue Shield, $1,200 to Bennington County Sheriff, $2,600 to Delory Sales and Service, $1,100 and $1,400 to G.A. Bow Fuels, $3,700 and $3,200 to Nortrax Equipment.
That one was for work on the backhoe. The other was the, I forget how many hours service for the grader.
Who was that with the backhoe?
It was a few different things. I'll get the list out for you. You have kids, you always have it up my head.
What did it mean, major or little?
Uh, no, it was more cumulative effect. You know, it's a number of things that need to be done.
Yeah, okay, right.
And the grader was just its intervals, service intervals, and it was just timed for, I can't remember how many hours it was, but it was like a thousand-hour service or something.
They come here and do that?
Yeah, they do it right in the garage, yeah.
$1,500 and several miscellaneous to Ribco Supply.
Ribco provides just a whole bunch, everything from washers to, you know, rakes, you name it, they...
Okay.
Kind of like a master car.
Yeah, yeah, everything.
$6,600 to Shasbury Fire Company.
That is the transfer, if you remember the quarry request that in the will was left to the town to use for the benefit of the Select Board. At the last meeting, we voted to move the money to the fire department to use for execution equipment.
Okay, okay, good, good. $2,900 to Stevens CJD.
That is to do more work on our dodge.
Okay. No, Ken's glad to hear that.
Yeah.
About the same thing.
No, nothing. It's a leg on.
$1,800 to VLCT Property and Casualty Insurance.
Yeah, it's just an adjustment to our insurance grades. Actually, it's an adjustment for the garage.
$24,000 to Williamy Daily.
Yeah, that was a lot of money.
That would be our mud season.
That was our mud. It was our mud money.
Another $6,000 to Williamy Daily. And those are the items over $1,000. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving check warrant number 31, say aye.
Aye.
So that check warrant number 31 is approved, 5-0-0. Total amount was $74,175.49.
Did we get straightened out with pecking of materials? What was it need?
Right now, we're taking a mixed delivery from, not SLR, Wallenford, Texas, and pecking material we're going to blend it ourselves to start putting out.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to give that a shot.
Literally going to start to stack piles at the gravel, at the...
As soon as the lunch dries up, you know, you can start putting stuff down there. Because right now, it's pretty much soup at the bottom there, too, so...
Well, yeah, no, but I mean, some of the back roads are still wet.
Oh, yeah, yeah, many of them, and it's still going to be a little bit before work can be done on a lot of them.
Yeah.
Are there any announcements? One announcement, the Internet Coverage Survey that we've been conducting for a little over a month, it ends today. So if you hadn't had a chance to go online and do that, you can get to it from our website, shasburvyvt.gov. We'll be taking it down tomorrow. I'll be picking up the signs.
What's, what's your, what's your gut feeling on response? 10%, 15%?
As of a week ago, we had 240 some odd responses. So you're expecting 1,500 households, so...
That's about 10%.
Between 10 and 20%. Which is not bad, yeah. And we always knew this would be the first step, you know, with this, we can take the places where people say they don't have coverage, combine that with the coverage maps that we get from the state, and then figure out, you know, where we need to go door-to-door and find out what the details are. But this will, this will definitely help. Any public comments? I don't see any members of the public here. Treasurer's Report. Melanie Dexter, welcome.
I wanted to point out that first warrant that you approved, the, what was it, $9,700?
$9,700.
That was just a reissue of two checks that were voided, so you had already actually approved that money. Just wanted to clarify that. It's not additional money. I want to, I hope that the three people who asked for tax bills today were able to get their taxes in. All of the treasurers were talking about this online, about why is everybody asking for tax bills today?
Yep.
Yeah. Anyway, so it is in fact Tax Day. I have not had a lot of time, but it's one of these mid-month reports, doesn't tell you all that much. And this became out of, out of date one minute after I printed it because we got, we just got our quarterly highway money, so that'll boost the receipts a bit, but...
Okay.
It's better going the other way.
Yeah. Who knows, maybe, maybe that's happening in there while I'm in here, too. So anyway, not much going on. You see that there's that inter-fund transfer. The fact that it's fairly small, that $45,000, that's just me keeping very, very on top of cash this time of year because we, we're a little bit, it's not, it's nothing unusual, but we are a little bit low on, low on cash because it is the end of the year, so I'm going to, you'll see probably a lot of those inter-fund transfers. Every time you approve checks that are from other funds, I will come back and transfer the money. I know I've been saying that every time, but that's just what that is. Yeah, not much...
Melanie, what's a Class III transfer?
Oh, that's the, that's just the little grant we got for Class III, uh, Class III roads. It was a small grant.
Yeah, it was the RAS grant that they paid off.
Yeah. And it came, what the state does is when, when they give us money, it just appears in the checking account, and that isn't the account I want it in, so I always have to transfer it to the correct account. And don't get me started because it's really, really irritating. If they would just send me a check, then I could put it where I wanted it to be, and I would probably know what it was. Okay, so look at the bottom half. So that's our cash position right now. That's going to get us through the end of the year. It's, it's fine. We'll be fine, but it, I don't, I get a little antsy if it gets below $100,000, and it probably will, but not, but not very much and not for long. And then I'm planning to have your paperwork for the line of credit ready in June, so you can sign off on it. I can't do any draws until July, but I'll probably do my first draw pretty close in July. So I've already talked to the bank, and they said it's fine to do the paperwork early, just as long as I don't do any draws early. So look for that in a couple of months. That budget status doesn't tell you anything mid-month. There's too much else going on, so we can ignore that. If you want to look at the reserve spreadsheet, let's see. Kind of a lot of activity there just because of those transfers. So every time you guys approve a check for any other fund, and I transfer the money, that's what you see with those debits. That's, that's paying back the general fund, the cash that we just wrote a check for. And also, if you look down at, for example, 8:30, that's the professional audit. You see that we're in a, that's actually the honest position. We were showing that we had $13,000 or whatever for, for a while. We really didn't. We had already spent that money, so that's an honest cash position now. But that's exactly what we expect. We need to build that up because we made the decision to have annual audits, which is a very good idea, so... But, but when you, when, in the past, when you've looked at that and you were thinking, why do we have $13,000? That's, it was not accurate. That was just cash that was owed to the general fund.
So do we need to increase the budget line?
No, I think we're fine. No, it's just that when we decided to go to annual audits, we had not already anticipated putting cash in for years, but we're...
Yeah, I mean, we, we cover the annual audit and the budget every year.
Yeah.
It's just something we have to talk to our auditors about of catching up with this line.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, yeah, you know, we, the first year, because we didn't have the $14,000 there...
Yeah, so this is not this year. This is several years ago's audit that's causing that to be a negative.
So a couple of years ago, we, we deficit spend, we spent a deficit in order to get the audits going. Since then, we've been keeping track and because of the way auditors are...
Yeah, there's some weighted...
Yeah, we should have flattened this out already. We need, we need to just do this.
So anyway, when you, when you see something like this, it kind of reminds you that, that we've been, I don't like, like people to get too excited about these numbers because those are just cash. And if you looked at the actual balance sheets for those, you would see that had a great big negative number that was owed to the general fund.
We don't need that in there anymore. Once you get it, once you get it zeroed out, you don't need it anymore because it's taken care of.
Yeah, if we talked, if we talked to the auditors about how to...
Get it out of there.
Yeah, yeah, because it's, it's not this, it's not pertinent to anything going on now.
Yeah, okay, understood.
So will they let you do that at some point?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just say, it's not really a deficit anymore and zero it out?
It's, it's not, it's not a deficit that's meaningful for the budget because it's, it refers to a budget that's several years old.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
I'm sure it does to auditors.
That's pretty much all I have to say. Anybody have any questions?
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Melanie.
How do you like your new office?
Oh, I love my new office.
Okay, item eight is the MGH Solar Proposal. We had a presentation last time from a gentleman who offered the town a chance to save $1,200 on our electric bill each year by buying into this solar project. We would buy credits, our credits, we would buy credits at 93 cents on the dollar, apparently, which would give us a 7% discount on our electric bill. The, the catch is we're signing into this for 25 years. And as Tony pointed out last time, solar technology is improving all the time. We could, you know, 10 years from now, find that solar's, solar electricity is cheaper than it was in 2019.
Well, the state also has to set a rate for buyback, haven't they? That's, that was another issue.
That I don't know.
Yeah.
My, my feeling from the beginning was, I can't think of anything I want to commit to for 25 years for that smaller, smaller benefit. So unless there is a motion to the contrary, we will just not take advantage of that. No action is required.
I agree.
I agree.
I can't commit to town for 25 years.
Yeah, okay, very good. I would mention, we have a recently formed Energy Committee in town. I did run this by them, several of them. Ben Jewlett, Rob Costantino, Chris Williams all poured over the contract, and they agreed that it's not, not that great a deal. Bima Nita, I believe is his last name, the power guru in North Bennington, he's on this committee. He said that they do these kinds of arrangements, too, but their standard discount is 10%.
Right.
And this one is, is seven. And I think he said their standard period is 20. I'm not sure I'm remembering that.
The only thing I liked was he said they were building in abandoned quarries in other places. I thought that was innovative, but that was about it.
Yeah. Okay.
Are we, is the Energy Committee going to look at the possibility of solar for the garage?
That's something we could ask them to do. Right now, they're still kind of feeling their way around, trying to decide where they fit into town government. Do they want to petition to become a, a, a committee under town government, you know, subject to open meetings and directed by the Select Board, or do they want to remain a citizens advisory, advisory committee? They're still debating that, but certainly, if that's something we were interested in, I'm sure they would be eager and open to the idea of being given a task.
Was the, was the trusses built so that they would take the weight of the solar panels?
Well, we'd have to look into all that. There's numerous questions. We had looked at this a little bit at the very beginning. There's just, there'd be a lot of questions on it. But there's also different arrays you could put there on the corners of the property, even the ones that turn with the sun. They don't necessarily even have to be on the roof. So actually, they push the trees back so far. There's a little rise next to the building. You can probably put a couple on.
Okay, just...
Yeah.
It's definitely something we should consider.
Absolutely.
It's gotten to the point now where you can just about offset your loan payments with your electric bill so that your short-term costs are essentially zero for buying into solar. And then in 10 or 12 years, when you pay it off, for the next 20, 30, 40 years, the life of the system, you get free electricity. And if we're taking a long view of town energy bill, that, that could be valuable.
I think you have to be careful, Tim. I checked some solar power for my, my roof, and I took it to my lawyer, and they said, you know, don't, it's trying to put that roof at least, don't do it because they own the panels. If you have to make repairs to your roof, you're responsible to take those panels off, and you're mandated to put them back. So if you want to use them, fine, put the ones on the ground with the, with the trackers. I don't think I'd be opposed to that. But if you're going to put them on the building, you're opening yourself up to a lot of liability.
Okay.
You know, this is the other option of the west, east side of the transfer station, where we took it down all the trees, and underneath will be where we store everything. There's a whole space there. They could mount a bunch of panels that would probably power the garage.
I just think it was worth it just to look.
Just look, yeah.
In case, you know, we may, we may, we may not use all that much electricity. It may not be economically feasible.
That's the other part, because all this lighting, it's, it's all LED. We are getting money back for those lights. But, yeah, it's, when they came around, the, a couple of members came around and it was like, you know, we don't, we really know, you know, the engineers have told us that we'll use this much power for this and that, but let's get through a couple of seasons and see what it really takes to keep the building going.
Yeah.
And the panel is going to grow more efficient anyway.
Over time, yeah, you would think.
Yeah.
All right, okay. Next up is the Public Works, Public Works Report. We were talking last time about getting a compaction grader, compaction roller for the grader. It was a big enough item that we decided we ought to look at going out to bid on Dave, on that. Dave, what did you find out?
Well, there's two other companies that make similar products. Neither one are serviced by Nortrax, and Nortrax is our provider for John Deere and for maintenance of the deer, and they're the ones who, in their original estimate, included installation of this product on it. The other products that I found, they're in Kansas and North Dakota. It seems to me where these things were all originated from. And there's, just you buy them there, and just get them shipped here, and then we'd have to find someone to put it on. Nortrax and John Deere puts these on John Deere's, and it just seems that it would be the most efficient way of doing this because then if we have an issue with anything, the people who are already contracted with to service the deer would be the ones coming down to work on it. And this one is what they install on our machine everywhere. So I think it's, it's more, in the long run, we'll be much better off having the one they supply put on. And there's really no, no difference in, in expense, and there's no difference in, in time delivery because it's going to take them a couple of weeks to get one. And getting it from Kansas, where one of these places was in North Dakota, then like I said, you have to find someone to put it on, someone to warranty it, and they were putting an attachment on the deer that wasn't installed by our dealer, and, you know, aftermarket products always turn into problems if they're not...
And the ones that, in Kansas and North Dakota, they cost about the same?
Yeah, they look about the same. You know, of course, they're not going to give you a specific thing unless you get into it real deep with them, but this is something, for this, the price they gave us, the $39,000 was delivered, installed here, and up and ready to go.
How is that compared to the other suppliers, the other manufacturers?
Like I said, they, that doesn't include delivery, doesn't include installation.
How's the price, though?
Well, the price for the basic unit seemed to be about the same, but then it's getting it here, then it's having it installed, and then who's going to service it? And see, if they install it, they're going to service it, too. They're going to take care of it.
Yeah, but there can't be a lot to go wrong with that. I mean, it's just...
Well, that's the famous last word, is there can't be a lot to go wrong with it. You know, it's like, you know, I'm just looking at it, like deer is the one who services our equipment. This is what deer puts on, they put these on, and, I mean, I'll go with you, which is one reason why I do like this one, is because we're talking about a fairly basic piece of equipment, so why not get the one that our people service and work with?
Well, no, I understand that, but I'm just, you're talking that much money, it'd be nice to have a comparative bid, but you really can't get it.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if, if we want to spend a lot of time, well, we're back to the same basic issue. It's, these people service our equipment, they service this, they want this, this is the only one they'll install.
Probably more repair could put it on, but if you gave them the specs on...
Oh, I, you know, we could probably put it on.
Well, yeah.
You know, and, but then the deer starts getting something wrong with the back end, and, well, who put this on it? And, you know, we have a $250,000 piece of equipment here that we're putting a little attachment on comparatively, and I think it'd be better in the long run because this thing has another 20 years here that our dealer was doing it and specing it to what he wants, you know? I think it's just a question of, the important part is already here. This is the add-on, you know? You know, you know, because if, if something starts to go wrong, they're going to go, we didn't do this. Who put that in? You know, your rear axle was slipping because you put this on here, if this wasn't done right, and, you know, be an endless battle with them. And like I said, the real money is already parked here.
So our local dealer is called Nortrax?
Nortrax.
Nortrax?
They're all over New England, they're, you know...
So, and $39,000 was the total price?
$39,550 installed.
Okay.
I make a motion.
So we have a motion from Art to purchase a compaction roller for the grader from Nortrax for $39,500.
Seconded.
$550.
Sorry?
$550.
$39,550. Moved by Art, seconded by Ken. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 So that motion is approved, 5-0-0.
All right, we'll order that and get that out because then I'll start doing, providing the benefit almost immediately.
Yep, okay.
We do have money for that, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's just out of the equipment fund.
Okay, all right.
How fast can we get it?
Two to three weeks installed. Maybe, you know, it depends. That's what, without him putting in the, in the computer, but, you know, as far as he knows, there could be one in Syracuse waiting to go somewhere, you know? Or we have to wait for it to come from, this one's made in South Dakota, I believe. But, you know, they're, they're a big dealership, and deer is huge, so they'll find one somewhere pretty quickly.
How, how big is that, anyway, in diameter?
I'd have to go get the spec sheet, which I don't have here, and this does not have the specs on.
Did you see pictures of it?
I didn't.
Okay, it's, it's a bunch of wheels mounted on, on an axle. They're just, just rubber tires, smooth rubber tires mounted on the axle, and there's two, two axles so that they, there it is right there. It's, it's no wider than the grader itself.
And the grader can put down pressure on it to increase, you can vary the amount of pressure you're putting on for compaction. And when they install it, you can lift that lifts up for maneuverability, and it can, you can, the best part is, like I said, you can alter how much pressure you're putting on the back.
That really flattens and smooths the road out nice.
Yeah. Well, you know, one of the problems we have is when we grade, there's always this amount of material that's loose. And if you compact it and then chloride it, you're going to start really keeping the road together. Compaction is a huge part of doing it. I mean, it would be better if we could get a really fast vibratory roller to follow around the yard, but that's never going to happen. But this is one-man operation, which is the other great part about it. It's being graded and compacted at the same time, one person moving along. And we're going to be grading from now until next October before winter, and we'll be compacting right as we're doing it. Because we've all seen the roads where, you know, before someone getting up there, or even sometimes before it's even chloride it, someone drives up, or worse, a truck drives up, puts a rut right down the road. someone drives up, or worse, a truck drives up, puts a rut right down the middle. And as the road settles, you have this right down there. You know, you just keep packing in the top surface and it should provide.
So this should really alleviate a lot of the problems we're having, right?
Uh, it should help a great deal. I didn't see anyone who said this was a bad idea, you know? And actually, people are making them now in the state, they're just trying, you know, cobbling stuff together, but.
It's a simple design.
It's simple, but like I said, the benefit of this is being able to adjust the compaction. And you can put a lot of down pressure on this if you want to.
Sixty thousand?
Yeah.
Do they still yark rake? They haven't been yark raking lately?
You know, we don't have, have like the rocks and stuff and the, if, if you create the crown and everything, the yark rake is kind of flat.
Yeah, that's what.
Plus it leaves that ridge alongside the road.
It leaves the ridge alongside the road. And this would, that's, again, that's.
If you, if you got proper gravel on the road, you don't do yark rake anyway.
Yeah, so we don't pull up that many rocks.
No.
All right. Joe, I just wanted to mention that.
Okay.
A few months ago, maybe six months ago, V-Trans came out with a new manual.
Where with this, once you do this, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, V-Trans came out with a new gravel road maintenance manual a few months ago. And, uh, Art and I looked through it and the thing that I noted, uh, we both noted about it was that they talked about using compaction a lot, uh, for a lot of routine road stuff. And after grading was one in particular.
Just reading some of the benefits on the grader product, it's quite a deal. Do you expect that if there's two graders working in the same area, that he'll go through after the one that doesn't have it on and compact him, or is that necessary?
Uh, I don't think that'll actually happen.
Okay.
Uh, only because of the time it would take for another grader to go around. But we only use the two graders, like now, they're out, both of them are out. It's really mud season, but with one grader going with this thing on it, we won't have to have, try and get two out in the fall. It's really just to get us out of mud season. And that's one of the topics for tonight too. We know it's a little slow going around, but a day like today, days last week, it's just cutting into it. Roads on the east side are still wet, they're still coming up, so, uh, it takes a while. But once, once the original, or the first grading is done after mud season, this will go around and just keep moving. It'll make a big difference. It'll make a big difference going into winter next year too. Because the roads will be compacted and graded, all of them, and several times before we get to winter.
Okay, the next item up is, uh, opening bids for the many construction, handful of construction projects that we have this year that are all, I believe, all funded by state grants.
Yes, there's, uh, you grant an aid, some are grant an aid, some are better back roads, or better roads it's called now. Uh, these are grants that have been kind of piling up, they're not huge projects. It's a series of smaller projects from Horton Hill to a part of Cider Mill, uh, part of Murphy by Sally Gannon. Uh, so what we've done is we put out a bid, we delivered the bid to six people. And one submitted a bid, one person came to the actual inspection of the roads. But, uh, we did deliver to five others who chose not to bid. It's kind of the scope of it, it's a lot of jobs and you need a little manpower to do it. So, uh, Weaver put in the bid today.
Okay.
Where is that outside your building, down by the swamp?
Yeah, way down at the far end by, uh.
Next to road, or what's that?
No, way down.
Trust myself with sharp objects.
Right before the end of the road.
And that's what?
Yeah, on the swamp.
Right, we're good in Maple Hill?
Yeah, thank you, yeah, Maple Hill. My hills and valleys.
I know, I know.
Okay, so, um, as Dave said, this is the one bid we got out of, not just posting, but, but asking.
Yeah, we actually went to six people.
Went to several contractors, asked them to bid, they chose not to. Weaver is, uh, the only one we have here. Uh, it states here, the project sites, uh, Cider Mill, Coal Spring, Holy Smoke, Murphy Hill, West Mountain and Horton Hill. And the total for all six projects. Well, this is actually five projects because he's not bidding on Holy Smoke.
Yeah, we, we've taken, I was just about to say, we've taken Holy Smoke off because there's an issue with, uh, A and R and the pond and blocking the pond off. Because it's, it's just turning into not the easy project that when we walked it with, with the state people last year. Yeah, you have to stop the water, you have to move the pipe down, there's some fish in there, or something is.
Okay.
We'll use, we'll use the money somewhere else. It would only have been like a few thousand dollars.
Couple sticks of dynamite?
Yeah, it's just, uh, not, not worth it.
That's the one with the cover.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so the, uh, the total, uh, bid for all, uh, five projects is forty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. And that's, uh, in round numbers, fifty-six hundred for Cider Mill, fifty-six hundred for Coal Spring, fifteen thousand for Murphy Hill, three thousand for West Mountain, and four thousand for Horton Hill. What did I just say? Golly.
Uh, we can.
Fourteen thousand. Good thing you're looking over my shoulder.
And the, the total was forty-two, eight twenty?
Forty-two, eight twenty. Got that right, didn't you?
Yes, he did.
And he had all specs, they worked each project.
Oh, yeah, he and Michael, uh, went to each site and, uh, reviewed certain things at each site and even decide where they'd move a couple of things down. You know, this, Craig brings some, uh, certain amount of experience to these things too. And they were looking at different things, uh, so. And, and Mike has, as we all know, Mike has worked for Weaver before, so.
I, I guess I'd like to make a motion that we vote on it tonight so that Weaver isn't gonna be taking on other jobs. He knows this has gotta be priority if we're letting it right off. So I make the motion that we award the bid to Weaver.
So I have a, a motion from Art to award the, the bid to Weaver Construction for the five projects mentioned for forty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
Seconded by Ken, discussion? I think, uh, your, your point is well made that we get this to him early, make sure he gets it on his schedule.
We want to be first.
Yeah, Mike and I, he has worked with him before, has, uh, will be, uh, will be a good eye on keeping, uh, keeping things in line. So I think, uh, I think I'm comfortable going with that.
Another factor is we have to complete all these by June thirtieth.
Yeah, that's.
So, so he has to get it on his schedule.
Yes.
Yeah, we have to use the grant money by June and nobody else will, will bid, even if we ask them nicely, so. Okay, any other discussion?
Dave, what was the problem with, uh, Holy Smoke, you said?
The culvert, you know, the big culvert, right, the turn, the turnoff. Uh, it has to be lowered. The, the water from the pond on the north side comes close to overtopping the road.
Yeah.
So we wanted to lower the culvert down.
Which would lower the water level in the pond.
Correct.
So stupid question.
That's a no-no.
Why can't you put the, the foot of gravel over the top?
Well, you could, but that's not worth the grant. When we were looking at it, we were looking at it the other way. When we stopped the people going around, you can build the road up and you have to put it in a guardrail. It's too hard to off the ground.
Well.
Should probably have a guardrail anyway, because it's a fall off to the right side.
Yeah, no, I know, but I mean, it's.
No, I know, you can, you can build it up, I know, there's, there's options. It was one of those that.
Well, that would still be cheaper than what they wanna do.
Oh, yeah, well, the problem, the color wouldn't be that big a deal except for the water and the fish and the A and R.
Well, that's what it is.
Yeah, that's, yeah, so. That, well, that's why we took it off too, it's just like, we'll just move on from here and just, uh, because we can use that money, uh, because this Ali Gannon, Murphy Hill thing is gonna be quite a project and there's lots of trees involved there and everything. Uh, so we can use a couple of thousand that was gonna go to Holy Smoke.
But if we should get a flood and the water should take that culvert out, then nature took its course.
Well, yeah, then we get FEMA to give us money to replace the whole thing.
Yeah, okay.
So I was a little unclear there, are you saying that we're, uh, the, the grant money that would have gone to Holy Smoke will get used elsewhere, or we have to give it back?
The six, there was six projects in the one grant, Holy Smoke was one of them.
I see.
So I'm assuming, because there's no way of peeling off how much money was going to each one, that we can use it otherwise, okay, instead of twenty thousand, they'll give us nineteen thousand if we don't do Holy Smoke. And one thousand wasn't gonna cover Holy Smoke anyway. They all understand because it's part of them too. A and R and going into having to deal with the pond and everything just isn't gonna work. It, it isn't gonna work.
Any other discussion? All in favor of awarding the bid to Weaver Construction, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that motion carries five zero zero. All right, uh, what else, Dave, you were gonna talk about the grading schedule?
Oh, yeah, basically, uh, you know, the graders are out every moment they can be. Uh, rain does not help the schedule whatsoever. There's still frost coming out of a number of roads, roads are shaded, a lot of roads on, on the east side still are, are not quite ready.
We oughta outlaw pine trees.
Yeah.
Gee, every place there's a mud hole, it's a pine tree.
Yeah, yeah.
Pine tree, shady, yeah.
Uh, but the graders are moving along as, as fast as they can. Um, there's a good amount of roads that are done already. There are a good amount of roads that are not done. And, and, you know, we can go churn up the road and it's really not gonna improve it. In a lot of cases, it'll make it worse. Uh, I appreciate there, there are potholes and I've driven on a lot of the roads and, um, you know, we're, we're getting around as quick as we can. Uh, just to address one thing we hear though, uh, you know, we hear why are people ditching, why are people weren't doing tree work? It's because we have six crew members and two graders. So the other people are out doing projects that need to get done too, while the graders are going around. Uh, and, and every day you'll see them out tomorrow, tomorrow's, keep your fingers crossed, it's supposed to be nice, along with Wednesday and probably Thursday, uh, Friday, depending on where that is. But, you know, a day like today, last, what was it, Thursday, I think it was? You know, if, if you go out and you start breaking open roads and it starts pouring on you, uh, you know, it doesn't work. But we've done more, Mike has chanced it more, getting the graders out with rain coming than we have in the past, just trying to get something done. You win some, you lose some on that, you know, uh, and you get kind of criticism either way with that. But they are out and, you know, it's not been a pleasant winter. And I know it always sounds like excuses, but it's just weather and dirt and this is, there's, there's no magic cure for this. And it's just gonna take them a while to get around to, to the roads, but they're getting around as quick as they can to the major roads. So, uh, they'll be there. And we are. It's a clerk signaling she's leaving. Uh, but, but that's, other than, than, uh, the grading and they are putting some gravel down to try and cure some potholes before they can get to them with the grader. But, uh, it just does take a while to go around. And we did put a huge amount of stone and gravel down, uh, when it was muddy a couple of weeks ago. I mean, we just paid one of the bills, it was twenty-three thousand dollars. Uh, so it's not like we haven't been putting a lot of material down. Some people don't see it because it's fifty miles of road. You know, we know there are potholes in the short stretch here, but there's been other roads where there's been long stretches.
Mud.
Yeah, so, uh, it's getting done. Whenever the sun ever comes out, it'll seem like it's done really quickly. If we could get a solid week or two weeks straight, we'd pretty much be done with the whole thing. So just ask for a little patience, I know we've been asking for that for a while. This has not been a pleasant mud season, so.
I'm not hearing a lot of criticism, people understand.
I think most people understand that, you know, it's, it's a difficult situation that we're, we're trying to get through.
Yeah.
And it'll be better when we continue moving forward to things like the roller, try to make the roads better. You know, some of it's equipment, some of it's a new direction, and I think we're getting to all that. Uh, let's see, I think that's it. Well, we did put in the grant for, to continue our seemingly endless east road project of paving, the last section, uh, well, partially the last section. Going up from, uh, where we ended, uh, going north to seven would be the, the section we just put in for.
Ken, uh, you check with Mike about getting the drag, dragback paper for these bad areas like, uh, Buck Hill?
Yeah, we've already talked.
Where you got whole sections.
Yeah, we've already talked about that. And we do have to address Buck Hill before next winter. Uh, something has to be done to repair those edges where it's all broken off, you know, where.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, the, the whole top coat is off, you can see it, so. Um, he did have a plan for that and we're, we're looking, I don't know, we're, we're looking at, uh, there's like I was telling you, the attachment that can go on a skid steer, that you can just grind up small patches. But you have to bring in, you know, you have to bring in hot material.
Could you use that coal patch?
Yeah, you can use the coal patch, you gotta bring in hot material, so it has to be done at the right time.
Or throw stones at it.
Yeah, well, you know, that's kind of the thing that goes on, you know, you throw a coal patch down, pops right up.
Week later, it's gone.
Yeah. So before the plant closes in the fall, it'd be nice to, uh, really repair those sections because realistically with, you know, the, uh, amount of money we can generate to do the repairs, really fix the road, it's gonna be a while before Buck Hill.
Yeah.
And that's similar to a lot of places where you see a lot of patches on roads and they try and maintain it the best you can.
Sorry, my computer's misbehaving. Um, anything else on roads?
No.
Oh, you said you were gonna check on that, uh, White Creek Road on that corner? If I had been bored or not?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Because my, it was being done, I don't recall if it was done already or not.
But I was over, I was over it last week, it's starting to move in the other leg.
Yeah, no, I know, that's another project that's gonna have to be done and that's gonna be a big one because that's gonna have, require West, uh, that's not, White Creek to be closed all day long. Probably steel plated at night. It's gonna be a big one. I think Mike was telling me it'd probably take two days to do it too.
All of that?
Yeah.
It's, you're gonna get out of the ways there.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be some substantial digging there. I think, it depends what the, what the core sample shows.
Yeah.
Could be like brownells where they said just go to X feet, put the stone mattress into the reed or whatever you wanna call it. And don't go any deeper because you're just upsetting.
You're getting the other, other layer of clay.
Yeah. So it just depends on what the core sample shows.
If they haven't core sampled it, can we also have a core sample up the road further?
Yeah, by the other one, yeah, you were mentioning, yeah. The road has potential for many spots to do that.
Okay.
Too much clay on that side of town.
If you, I think it's quite obvious where it is, okay?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure, I know where you're talking about.
All right, next item is personnel policy on, uh, cell phone usage.
Yeah, I, I saw the, uh, email you sent around, I guess that was back on the second after the last meeting. I know a lot of people hadn't seen it. Uh, yeah, we can work a bunch of that in and just modify this. I didn't know if anybody else had any comments, because I didn't wanna rewrite the thing until I knew where everybody stood on it. Uh, because you have, uh, I mean, I can see where we can interchange a few things here and just.
Yeah, a lot of it is from, from what you had said.
Yeah.
Couple of things that, uh, we, we mentioned when it first came up is we don't wanna tell the guys they can't use their cell phones because we, they use that to communicate. And if they're communicating about work, uh, that's a good thing. So we don't wanna make it so onerous that they're afraid to use their cell phones. At the same time, we don't want them using their cell phones when it could be unsafe.
Yeah.
Art mentioned that, uh, I had mentioned that, uh, you know, using handhelds while driving is against state law. He reminded us that with.
Federal law.
With, that it's against federal law.
Federal law, yeah. With the CD, if you're a CDL.
With the CDL, yeah.
CDL driver. This, this policy is more restrictive than what the law allows because you are allowed. Because you are allowed to have Bluetooth or headset or something like that. But, I, I think we have to go with this because we're talking extremely dangerous conditions though. Um, backhoe operator or something's always got somebody in front of them. Plow trucks are bigger than a standard truck. Um, I think we, uh, I recognize it as more restrictive, but I think it has to be.
Yeah, the, really the one thing that's more restrictive than maybe would be required by law is, um, the idea that distracted driving is a serious situation. And while the state allows you to talk, uh, with a hands-free device, you know, if you're driving a, uh, a plow truck in a blizzard at night, um, you know, if you're talking about what's in front of you, that's one thing. But if you're, you know, having a fight with your girlfriend, um, that's, that could be a dangerous situation. So, what we're suggesting is that, uh, if you're talking on the phone, and I do this, uh, if I'm driving there on the road, if I get a call, if it's a call I need to take, I will take it hands-free. And if I'm gonna talk, I'll say, hang on, I'm gonna pull off and I'll talk off the road. But the idea that it's fine to drive down the road while your mind is somewhere else is really, uh, I think not a good thing and not something that, uh, that we wanna encourage.
Yeah, I, I, one part for the, uh, you, cause I was thinking of adding in line of use of cellular phones for work-related issues is permitted in accordance with all applicable state and federal laws, which basically means pull over and stop, cause they're all CDLs. Uh, I wanna leave it strong that, uh, use of cellular phones at a work site is prohibited except during break or lunch periods. It's too dangerous having people swinging heavy equipment while someone's answering their phone. Uh, the-
Absolutely.
The maybe received hands-free while driving, uh, you know, I don't know, they could stop and check to see who it was, uh.
Well, my thought there is, um, there is some coordination that can happen, you know, even while you're driving a plow truck at night. Uh, and if you get, a lot of times in Shasberry, if you get the call, that's where you're gonna get it. If you drive to the end of the road to try and call Mike back to tell him where you are with the plow truck, you might not get a cell signal. So, I'm kinda thinking in terms of, you know, work efficiency, uh, that's, that could be allowed. Uh, again, we don't want, I mean, even if you're driving in, you know, this part of the road, you don't wanna do a whole lot of driving talking about another part of Shasberry because you won't be thinking about what you're doing.
Yeah, that's, you know, the, all the hands-free stuff is great, but people are still driving totally distracted. Cause they're thinking about what they're talking about and not paying attention to what they're doing.
Alright, I, I just think using a cellphone while you're operating anything is a bad idea.
Yeah, me too.
Um, and what did we do before cell phones? We used two-way communication with radios. Maybe that's the way to go.
Oh, correct, and all our vehicles are equipped with two-way radios.
There you go.
So, it's really-
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought, I thought maybe cell phones were the only way to talk.
No, uh, well, this is the problem. It used to be you picked up the radio, but, you know, now, and it's not so much even to talk about work back and forth, but the cellphone turns into, what's the weather, what's going on?
That's right.
And that's the part where it needs to go. And it's true, you know, you know, the phone rings and you can see who it is and, you know, it's a certain person, I better call back. But, you know, it's not, every phone call and every text has to be looked at and acted upon immediately, you know, which is kind of the mindset we're into now.
You're at work.
You're at work.
I, I have, I mean, I don't use my cellphone at work.
Yeah.
It's there, at break time, I get it out. At lunchtime, I'll get it out. But during my work time, it's, it's-
Many, many places have total prohibitions against these phones.
It, it's allowed where I work, but I don't, I just personally choose not to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, like I said, the, the main thing generator of this is people wanting to use their phone on a site. It's too dangerous, you know, whether it's tree work, digging ditches, swinging the bucket, whatever. You know, it's just, put it down, pick it up at break. You know, if the phone rings or something, you can see who it is. If you think it's an emergency, okay, timeout. But, you know, someone sitting in a cab, you know, cause in most, most jobs too, someone's supposed to be flagging, someone's supposed to be paying attention while the other guy's digging or something. And if you're, you know, looking at something on your phone, you're not paying attention to much. You know, it's just, it has to be something that we have the ability to, to address. Because if we don't, and something happens, we're gonna be addressed, you know, for sure. So, I can take the suggestions from here and rework this and get a draft for the next meeting.
I, I, I think you'll see more productivity from your workers if they're not on the phone.
Yeah, and, and, you know, you, you have a break, you have two breaks in your lunch period.
That's right.
Well, look something up, go ahead, look it up, uh. Yeah, it's, it's how do you deal with this thing that's so intrusive and now the phone does literally everything?
Well, cause the phone is basically a portable computer.
Yeah, it is.
It's your PC, it's, do your banking, pay bills while you're driving your truck, I don't know.
And the other bit, the other important thing I wanna get on here is, is the camera and the video. Uh, you can't be doing that at work in a town truck of, of anything. I mean, you know, without everyone's permission for you to be doing it.
That's right.
And that, that's come up and it's, it's a privacy issue, it's a safety issue, it's everything else. So, I mean, that can just be in there. The camera and all that stuff, no place here, it's, it's against the rules.
Right. Well, as I said before, I think there are situations where the camera could be useful. If you're, if somebody's on one part of town looking at a situation on the road they're not sure about, they could take a picture of it, send it to Mike, ask him how to proceed. I think that should be allowed. But, you know, driving around, uh, at three in the morning, you know, shooting your route that you're plowing and putting it on Facebook, that's not, that's not what we wanna allow.
Do we want some teeth in there? I mean, we say it's prohibited, but we don't really say what that means. Can we say after so many violations or, or what?
Well, I think-
It does say that at the end, yeah. Employees who violate the policy will face disciplinary measures up to and including termination and/or face legal responsibility if in the course and scope of their duties they are involved in an accident and were using a cellular phone while driving.
Perfect. Okay.
Yeah, cause it has to-
Yeah, I think that's fine, but isn't it also the case that our personnel policy has a blanket statement at the beginning that say that, you know, if you don't observe the personnel policy, you can be subject to discipline?
Alright, yeah.
Yeah, it's reinforcing it and, uh, uh, yeah, it also says that should you be given a summons, this is all your responsibility, not ours.
Okay, let's let Dave, uh, take the suggestions that we had for him, work that up again and circulate it via email.
Yep.
Come back and act on it the next time. Okay, Coal Hall Garage update.
Well, there's much to report, uh-
We're pretty much done with Coal Hall updates, aren't we?
Yeah, yeah, Coal Hall is, uh, is the same way they are in the same two eighty category in the, in the reserve funds. Yeah, Coal Hall is essentially done. We do have, uh, Goldstone doing the outside appraisal of the building and where we'll go from there.
And we did, um, approve putting the firewall up.
Firewall, that'll be, I told, uh, Ed Schul that we'll be doing that after July first.
What's that?
Uh, if we build a firewall upstairs, uh, where the old balcony was, just to seal it, then we'll be able to use that for light storage. Otherwise, we can't store anything up there for fire code reasons.
And other than ADA, is that legal now? Is that entrance legal, other than ADA?
It's, uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's something we have to, this is part of the exterior thing. Uh, but that's coming and then we, the board voted three thousand for that, so when we get the final back, then we'll take that up again.
Okay.
So, Coal Hall is essentially done as far as any ongoing projects right now. And the garage is down to, uh, the interior of the garage is down to a minor punch list of things to do. Our new, uh, compressor is gonna be delivered this week, so they'll hook that up. Uh, right now, we're down to waiting for manuals and engineer test reports on different systems and, uh, we'll be ready to go. Uh, Weaver, who's finishing the site work, he's the contractor for Russell for the site work. That's going along fine and hopefully that'll be done by the end of next week, I think.
Weather permitting?
Yeah, weather permitting, yeah. I mean, it's the same thing, weather permitting. Then we'll have, uh, we'll be doing the top coat as we always planned to do. That was kind of outside of the original budget. But from the looks of it, I noticed we were down to like one forty-one. I think it was in the garage reserve. We owe one twenty-one to Russell, that's the final payment to Russell. So, we have that money left over for the gravel, since we've already paid for the poet and, uh, all the other odds and ends we had to put in there. Maybe the compressor still needs to be billed eighteen hundred dollars or something, so.
Okay.
Uh, it's just the odds and ends at the end. Uh, we are hosting our first meeting there on the twenty-ninth, so, uh, we have to get, have to get it done. We have to open the doors. But, yeah, he, uh, I'm sure Craig will be done by then. Uh, the gravel might not be down, done by then, but, uh, we'll be able to move into the building. We have a certificate of rock receipts and everything, the fire alarm set up and, uh, it's, like I said, it's just a minor punch list of move this, we still have it here. This is supposed to do with this and, you know.
Just selectmen's meeting or a road crew meeting today?
Yeah, we're having a, a-
Oh, state meeting, that's what.
Yeah, yeah, we're having a state meeting and we're having the, uh, next road foreman's meeting there.
Okay.
So, there's one on the twenty-ninth where people are coming down from the state, uh, to have some meeting there, so.
And we need an open house for the public besides?
Yeah, once we get it all finished and then maybe get into May or June, cause we'd like it to have a little bit of equipment there too. And we're gonna be, look kinda useless if it's just empty, you know? But it's gonna take a while, it's gonna take a while to move out of here.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and I'm still looking to have auction here sometime in June, maybe end of June. Uh, cause once we do inventory everything and move what's going up there, up there, all this stuff from back here, we're gonna put in this garage. And I think the easiest thing to do and the most equitable thing to do is just hire a local auctioneer, advertise it for some Saturday and just auction everything off, just get rid of everything. We have file cabinets, we have old tables, we have parts and trucks, half trucks and full trucks out here to auction, auction. Uh, just chunks of metal to go, yeah. See what we get for it, I mean, you know, and that way it'll just be one day and just auction the whole thing off.
Mm-hmm.
And then, uh, we'll probably have stuff left over. I don't know what we'll do with that, but we'll figure something out.
And then we're still hoping to, um, get the garage taken away for scrap metal?
Well, we'll see, we'll see, we'll see what the prices are. If not, it's probably about nine thousand to take it down. Uh, but that's all kind of the, part of the exterior of Coal Hall project coming up. I mean, the salt shed needs to go, this whole property needs a little work, uh.
Well, some of these things like getting rid of the salt shed in the garage will be, those demolition items will happen independent of what the architects come up with.
Yeah, yeah, that's just stuff going. And we have to, you know, we'll have to start talking with our landlord back here, uh, see where we're gonna go with this stuff. Uh, I mean, we have piles to move out, the trucks to move out. And we'll talk, we'll talk with you and see what, you know, what the break date will be and, uh, negotiate our way out.
Okay.
You know? I think it's, it's pretty much, everything's on target for the garage and there's, there's no surprises. We're really at the end of the whole thing.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Excellent job.
Good.
Congratulations on it.
No, thank you. I'm ready to be done with it too.
Yeah, yeah. What are you gonna do with yourself?
Well, we have a, we have a three million dollar water project to start.
We have to get a historic committee for the salt shed out here.
That's right, wow. That thing's so pulverized now.
I could've wished you had said that out loud. Okay, uh, other business?
Probably oughta talk about the discussion we had this morning about the-
Yes, you wanna relay that, Art?
Yeah, we, we were concerned about the condition of seven A. All the cracks coming through town with all the trucks, but then it became, I got concerned with above the iron kettle. There was a place where the road is actually sliding off to the right and it's actually opened up a crack on the center line. And, um, Bob-
Bob Faly?
Faly, Faly came and talked to us this morning. It's the same problem we're having with dirt roads. There is not sufficient, uh, base there and there's water problems. Uh, they're aware of that one up there. There's no easy fix to it. It's gonna have to be a major, uh, digging up, getting rid of the concrete slab and then finding out where the water's coming from and, um, doing how sorts of hydro, hydrologically excavating and all that sort of stuff. Uh, I guess they're just hoping it's not gonna slide off the face of the earth until then. The good news is, is that repaving through the center of town was going to be done this year, but the budget, we blew the budget on salt, the state budget, on salt and overtime. If there's money, it may be done, but it certainly will be at the top of the list for another year. That's the good news. But it's, again, it's just a inch and a half coating on everything. Five years, we're gonna have cracks again.
Yeah, this is a shinko, you know?
Well, that's, that's what Route seven is though. That was originally a concrete road.
That's right, yeah, we know that.
Eighteen on each leg. And all of cracks where they put expansion joints.
So, the original road is only sixteen feet, now we're-
I believe it, no more than twenty.
No more than twenty, was it?
No.
And now we're asking for twenty-four and twenty-six and that's why there's-
Well, yeah, but when you put the model eight down there, it's pretty good.
But, um, their comment was that they had a similar situation, uh, like what we've got up above the iron kettle, where they dug it out, compacted it and redid it. And it was worse, within a year, it dropped even more because the concrete was actually holding the road together. And when they took the concrete out, there was, they didn't do a good job of the base and taking care of the water and it came back to haunt them, so, um, you aren't gonna see anything up there unless something drastic happens, I guess is what I'm afraid to say.
Right.
Do you agree with that?
Yeah, I, I was impressed, Rob was, seemed to be aware of the situation and, uh, related that it, it did, uh, it did need work, uh, but because of the previous similar situation they'd had out on Route nine near Woodford, uh, he said, uh, we know it's a, it's a big project, it will require careful study. We can't just do like we did in Woodford, go in, dig up the concrete, hope it fixes it and then have spent all that money and it not fix it, so.
But, the good news is, the town is on the list now.
Yeah, we're on the list. That's better than we were a couple of years ago.
What list?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And we are gonna work with them on the sixty-seven culvert.
Oh, yes, um, their excavators-
Yeah, they have quite a problem up in Manchester. I was up there today, they have quite a problem up there, so.
The beavers are, uh, Shasberry Flats, at this end of Shasberry Flats, the beavers dam up the culvert. At it again.
And the water's very high.
I was wondering when they were gonna-
Well, they can't get to it, so our Volvo, we're gonna borrow their telephone pole. And, uh, but I wanna stay rep there.
Yes.
Directing it, because if we puncture their culvert, they were there directing us. Uh, and their telephone pole, but we can do what they do and get it done, so. We'll help them, Rob said fine, we like working with the town, so, but we have to do something. It's, it's getting up there, it is. And I've gotten calls about it, again. There's no plan to fix it anytime soon. You know, some kind of anti-beaver screen or something across the front of it, but-
They've been there for-
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Before we were.
Then what is that about trapping one of them?
The ones on there.
Uh, it's, it's really a state issue, but we wanna get the water moving. So, we're just gonna work with the state this time. And essentially what they've had before is a telephone pole, they're just like kinda-
Say it, Colville, add the set.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought I see water, what?
Yeah, so we'll just kinda like, like, follow the directions and open it up. And then it'll be back to their problem again. But it is, it's like, it's the same thing every year, it's-
Sure.
It's a big swamp and the beavers just come in.
Beavers do what beavers do.
Yeah, and that's what they do and-
Being beavers.
Yeah.
Any other business for us, Dave?
Nope. Uh, I will be taking a vacation day tomorrow.
Another one?
Another one. I take one a year. What it seems like.
Okay, um, reviewing action items, um, how are we doing on water fountains?
Uh, we're getting to it. The water fountain, the water's on. It was supposed to go on last week, I have to check to see if it's actually on. The water fountain isn't installed yet.
Okay. Okay, uh, that's gonna happen soon though.
Yes, it will happen soon.
We definitely wanna have water at Howard Park this, this season.
Yeah, oh yeah, definitely this season.
Okay.
Do we have to have it tested?
Uh, when we, the water system goes on, it's part of the regular sampling we do now.
Yes.
We have a license for it and all this stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, and we're still carrying an item on the, the fund consolidation, which probably.
I think we should get to now, we have time and I, I like to say, I think, uh, yourself, myself and another member of the board, we sit down, two got a public board, a public trustees meeting with them and just say, how can we get this straightened out?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I guess, um, but we're looking at next March before we can vote on anything, cause we don't have.
Yeah.
I, I, we've got the, the school board elections, but we're not gonna try to do anything to piggyback on those in the interim. So, yeah, so, uh, but yeah, let's get that meeting, uh, scheduled and get this out of the way, cause if we're not careful, we'll find ourselves in January, uh, trying to scramble to get this off on the ballot.
Cleanse up kinda quickly.
Yeah, it happens fast. Uh, let's see, going back to, uh, April first, um, we put out bids for rollers, Dave reported back on that today. We acted on that, uh, we reviewed the solar contract, acted on that. Um, we're moving forward with the firewall on the balcony. And then, uh, as Art related, uh, the conditions on seven A, we did have that meeting with Rob Failey today. Uh, and tonight, the only thing I got, Dave is gonna notify MGH Solar and let them know that we turned down the, their offer on the solar contract. He's gonna order the roller and he, uh, reworked the cell, your cellphone policy, personnel policy and circulate that.
We'll get that around. Uh, there is a possibility, cause I think it's three weeks to the next meeting. So we might have to try and get a special meeting just to do some, uh, bills.
Okay.
So I believe it is a little long to the next meeting.
Yeah, just let us know.
Yeah, I'll let you know.
Usually Monday's the best day, cause we all keep our Mondays open, so.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Got it.
Moved by Tony, seconded by Art, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.